You can call us to order, it's the magic hour. We'll begin with the Seminole Airport Authority, roll call.
Jeff Griffin. Bill Watlin.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Hansen. Larry Church.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Shane Fisher, we have a quorum.
Consideration, action of consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Jeff Griffin abstained. Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Airport Authority? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved. Flag it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered, pass that over to the Mayor. We're on the Gas Authority, sir.
If we could go ahead and call to order the Seminole Gas Authority, roll call please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Hansen. Shane Fisher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration, action of consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Abstained.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Shane Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Gas Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If we can now go ahead and call to order the Seminole Utilities Authority, roll call please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Hansen. Bill Watlin.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher.
Here. Consideration, action of consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Abstained.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Shane Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? Under current business, number one, consideration and possible action to approve the multi-use right-of-way agreement with Robert and Janet Burks for thirty feet of right-of-way located at or near the site of the new high school.
So it's at or near?
Yes, Burks, the easement going into the Burks property roughly goes from the tennis courts at the college, if you've seen the new tennis courts they built there on the south end of their campus, across the Burks property to the backside of where the new high school is going to be constructed, so our people have contacted the Burks family, they've agreed to issue an easement for the purpose of water and sewer and utilities across their property, so they've been extremely gracious, they did that for free, so we're very, very appreciative.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin? Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Shane Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, number two, consideration and possible action to approve the water service agreement with Tri-County Rural Water District Number Two to provide water and sewer services to the new high school.
Okay, so I really don't know how to describe it, I probably should have brought a map, but quite a bit of the northwest piece of Seminole is actually located within the Tri-County Rural Water District, and there are several federal protection laws against us serving in their territory without their permission, so Mike, in particular, has negotiated the way through the Tri-County Rural Water District Board, and they have, we have reached an agreement to supply water out there to them, and they will they will buy our water and sell it to the school, so that's, that is the plan.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Abstained.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Shane Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a second on that, just for?
Yeah, second.
Thank you. All right. City of Seminole, regular city council meeting, if I could get a roll call please, Jay?
Chris Hansen. DeeDee Patterson?
Here.
Stephanie Lambert?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Bill Watlin?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Jeff Griffin?
Here.
Shane Fisher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We could go ahead and stamp for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God whose mercies cannot be numbered except our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for our people. Let us love one another for you, God, our love. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Mayor, if the council would indulge us, the appointments and elections, probably is the most appropriate place to bring this up, but if we could move to that first, Jeff's got some business he needs to take care of before we actually get into the voting and other areas of the agenda, and we need to probably do some housekeeping on this because he's got something to present.
If we could go down to appointments and elections?
Appointments and elections, and I think that's about the only place we can do it.
Okay. So I have something I'd like to read, because I couldn't remember all of it right now, but Mayor and council members, on February third, I moved from my Ward Three to a new address located in Ward Two. So it's with mixed emotions that I'm notifying you of my resignation from the Seminole City Council, effective immediately. This will include my spot on SEDC as well. It's been my honor to serve with, serve the citizens of Seminole for almost twelve years as a representative of Ward Three. The members of the council during my tenure have always been respectful, even when we didn't agree on items brought before us. While not every item discussed was enjoyable, serving beside these wonderful people has been enjoyable. I truly believe when your decisions are made with, does this make Seminole a better place to live and work as your drive, then there isn't any wrong decisions. I believe the remaining council members have proven this, and it's why the citizens have had continued support, the continued growth and investment in Seminole. Steve Saxon, Mike Grant, Jake Cox, Sharon Emmett, David Hansen, Brian Baker, and Michelle McDonton, along with previous staff have always been helpful in answering any questions I might have had. When you have a great group like this, it makes the council's job much easier. The public works, community development, finance employees, serve our citizens every day. When the members of the council praise them on their work, it is well deserved. Thank you again for allowing me to give back to the great community that I love. Sincerely, Jeff Griffin.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, under the charter of the city of Seminole, because of the change in address, of course, the, that would make Jeff ineligible to continue serving, so we don't want to do anything to, to that's why he's abstaining, I just wanted to make that clear, that's why he abstained on the authority votes a few minutes ago, but I probably will be recommending to you, Mr. Mayor, to go ahead and appoint Corey Crabtree a month early, I guess, to fulfill the unexpired term of Jeff, who would take office anyway, I believe, in April, so he would come on board, basically, about a month early, so, anyway, Jeff notified me of this this morning, and actually, we've kind of known about it, but just didn't know right when it would occur, so I appreciate him calling me, and, and he had a million questions, and he knew exactly what he wanted to do, and I think it was the right thing, and certainly appropriate, so, thank you.
Can we get Corey on the agenda next week for the appointments?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Thank you again.
Yes, you'll have to take a vote on the resignation. We can do that now, or we can do it later, but this was something that was unforeseen, so I don't think it's inappropriate to take a vote right now, based on the, on the situation, so I'd ask the someone to make a motion.
Due to the extenuating circumstances.
I'll move that we accept the resignation with regret but understanding.
I'll say.
Can we get a roll call please, Jay?
Chris Hansen? DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin? Motion passes.
Consideration and action from consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the city council meeting? Under approvals and acceptances ordinances, number one, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number twelve oh eight, an ordinance creating Sections five, six, seven, five, six, eight, and five, six, nine to the City of Seminole Code of Ordinances to establish license and permit requirements for roofing contractors conducting business in the corporate limits of Seminole.
Moved to approve. Second.
Third.
Roll call please, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number twelve oh nine, an ordinance amending Title III, alcoholic beverages, Section one dash one A, definitions to the City of Seminole Code of Ordinances by amending the definition of a retail package store.
I take it this is because of the change in state law? We're just complying with the law.
Well, Dad and Jeff was resigning, so we figured after, yeah, we No, actually, you were right the first time, it is because we're trying to match up with the state law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number three, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number twelve ten, an ordinance amending Section four dash one dash eleven F, tethering and chaining of animals to the City of Seminole Code of Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Well, you go ahead, you got it.
Yeah, we, we've had quite a bit of discussion with the Humane Society on this, we've got Rosemary, our, our rock star animal control officer, and her staff is here tonight. Obviously, they've seen a lot of things that none of us ever see. Some of it we see, especially when they're, they're posted in the front yard and they're wrapped around the fence, and that's never good, but they've, they've brought, I think, a good ordinance, Brad has helped craft some of it, and Sharon certainly has been a part. I think we've got something that's enforceable now in front of you, something that's probably overdue, but I'd love to answer any questions, I'm sure Rosemary can fill in if you've got anything else outside of that.
Just to be clear, what's the procedure, should we see it on chain, uh, call the police?
Hi. I'm gonna take my laundry basket, bear with me, guys, I like to keep things with me wherever I go. So, my name's Rosemary, as you know, I'm with the Animal Control Division. When you see an animal tethered up through the new alterations, you can contact us through the emergency line through the dispatch in case where it's after hours, or in case you can't reach us at the shelter, the primary phone number to call would be the shelter facility number. A lot of the times you can reach my cellphone, but if I have another personnel on order, we won't be able to reach you in time.
What's the definition of tethered up, just on a chain tied to a tree, or what?
A lot of the definitions are kind of weird with the terminology tether. It's basically any type of restraint that you were to restrain an animal in the front of the property. If you guys are up for it, I have a couple examples. Now, these are examples that are legal at this current moment, which is why I'm going to bring it to your attention. And then you guys will see with the alterations that I'm hoping to adjust to, you might have a better perspective for the city of Seminole. I also have some photos, if anybody wants to see any of those. But let's, we'll do a couple good examples. This was on a thirty-pound black lab. This is legal. Let's see.
And that was tethered outside to that?
Uh, let's see, and you can tell the cat's hand goes up, ooh. This one was a fifty-pound dog that pulled itself out, this is also legal. Oh, I love this one. The dog was dragging this, I want to let everyone know, all of these materials are from the dogs directly, so I go pick them up through Animal Control, and I take them home with this, to the shelter. This was approximately a twenty-pound black, I think it was a Labrador mix, Retriever mix of sorts, small dog. It actually couldn't pull itself, which was really nice, because I could catch it easier. My favorite, Chihuahua. Oh, this one is my absolute, the, um, county help, this one. This was a, we named this dog Football. This was, how big was this football, ninety pounds? This was legal because he could have access to food, water, and shelter, except that the fence is right here, so give me an example of how that works. Then we have, oh, I'm sorry, this is the attachment to the black lab, here's his collar, he did have that on, so that was good. Oh, and this one, you can tell this is four different parts, I'm not even gonna take the bag off. But now, this was on a large dog, it was a mastiff mix, so it, you know, it worked for the length of the dog. It wasn't free of entanglements, he actually came with this as a collective group, so that was really nice. At this moment, though, this is all legal, this is okay. So when I pick up the animals with this on it, that doesn't make sense, on top of that, I don't know at what point they were able to get this straightened out, but it did meet the ratio that they kind of needed for that large-sized dog. To answer your question, per what we have restrained, this is all considered a tether, it's considered a restraint of an animal that they can contain on their property. You could use a leash as well, and consider it a restraint or a tethering policy. Does that answer it?
Yeah, I'm still a little confused, is it still okay to tethering if, if it's appropriate tether?
Yes, actually, some of the changes that I've assisted on making that might be able to help is not necessarily how does someone tether, or where, it's changes that would help make alterations to what we have now. I'm sure, does everyone know what the old code was, if not, I can read it to you. The old code states, "Any animal that is snake-picketed, tied to a snake, or kept on a rope or chain shall be placed to prevent entanglement with restraints of other animals or other objects, and cannot be within reach of any above-ground utility meter. The chain or rope shall be sufficiently linked to allow the animal complete access to food, water, and shelter at all times. The restraint shall be attached in a manner such as a collar, so as not to cause injury or discomfort to the animal. No chain, rope, wire, or bandana shall be used as a collar. Any dog so restraint is above shall not be strained in the spread of the yard of any residence or dwelling within the city limits of Seminole." That's what we have now, the establishes that I made to change, I'll go in least importance to, you know, beginning importance, the restraint must be appropriate to the weight of the animal, and be free of tangles or obstructions. The restraint shall be at least five times the length of the dog's body, as measured from the tip of the nose to the base of the tail, and terminate at both ends with a swivel. All areas accessible to a tethered animal must be maintained daily, including but not limited to the removal of animal feces. No animal shall be tethered to the front of above-ground utility meter transformer or mailbox, and the mail people will be delighted, hopefully. No animal shall be tethered to, uh, fence, I'm sorry, no animal shall be tethered to a fence, or tethered in a location that allows the animal to reach the opposite side of the fence. And then the big change that you're gonna see, it is going to be no animal shall be tethered outside for longer than any twelve hours in a twenty-four-hour period. And that's, I think, gonna be one of the biggest alterations that you'll see with this changing of adoption.
Did you, you mentioned something about access to food and water and shelter?
The goal is to make sure that when you do properly tether an animal, it not only prevents the animal from breaking free, where we end up chasing it, or it could potentially go after another animal, or a child, or a person, or get in the roadway, but you're, you're making these alterations to remind residents in the city limits of Seminole that animals are not considered lawn ornaments, and sometimes we could forget about them when we leave them out for such a long period of time. By simply checking and rechecking situations, you could remedy it quite easily and still have proper tethering, which would be helpful if somebody were to be working and they may not have a fenced yard or anything of that.
Does that shelter mean protection from the sun?
Sheltering is an indication for the Oklahoma State Statue, of something that performs the duty of making sure they stay out of weather and sun and rain, anything of that sorts. A good example is a canopy would not work, because the sides are not confined, so you're looking at more of an example of a doghouse.
Well, a doghouse sitting in direct sun in the afternoon in your life.
Could be complicational, if you see anything like that, always give me a call, that way I can go investigate it and make sure that it's, of course, not only suitable for this, but it's for the welfare of the animal. This ordinance that I have proposed today is just a section of the Cruelty Section. Section four one eleven has actually several different subsections. Section F deals with tethering, but I do have letters A through, I think, D that deal with other sorts of how you should structure your animal, how it should have food and access to water, that's you cannot deprive an animal of nutritional substance based on that breed, it goes through different things like that. On this one, it just breaks down the tethering, but on the rest of the sections for the cruelty prohibited, it breaks that down as well. So if you see something like that
So that covers, that'll cover the
Yes, sir, and always let me know.
Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay, thank you very, very much for coming.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration and possible action to approve the emergency clause associated with ordinance twelve ten above.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Current business, number five, consideration and possible action to approve renewal of the site agreement with New Age Project Incorporated.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number six, consideration and possible action to approve the engagement letter for audit services with Dillon and Associates PC for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. The fee amount is unchanged from the past few years.
Moved, moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number seven, consideration and possible action to approve accepting the proposal from Silver Star Construction as the contractor for various public works projects throughout the city. Is this our roads?
Yes, they, they do a lot of the roadwork that we, we do occasionally, but they're, the, the good part of this is we get to bill it out by, for example, if we want some track hoe work done next week, we can hire them by the hour. That's very, very unusual, but it's always a benefit to us, so we've had real good luck with them over the last fifteen, twenty years, so we're gonna recommend that we do it again.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number eight, on the addendum, consideration and possible action to approve the water service agreement with the Tri-County Rural Water District Number Two to provide water and sewer services to the new high school.
Moved to approval.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay?
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watlin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under reports, city manager?
Well, while we're on the subject of easements, I want to re, re-circle back to that. We have one easement that we're having some difficulty with, I want to make you aware. We call it the Barrett Easement, and is roughly the, the east-west line from the tennis courts at the college to Warren Boulevard. So, the, the land that we've got there, that we've got a current easement on, carries the water line, I think it's a twelve-inch water main that goes to the Haney Center. So, the plan is to put the sewer line for the new school in that same easement. We've got an easement, and have had an easement there since the Haney Center was built. So, we initially had asked for a, a temporary construction easement, ninety-day temporary construction easement. We met with the landowner, the landowner says, hey, you still owe me eighteen thousand dollars from the original easement. There's, there's some debate in that, because we did agree to do some work, we did agree to do some, oh, I think we agreed to do some bulldozer work and build some, or sod some areas, and things like that. I don't think it was eighteen thousand dollars worth of work, but that's the number he arrived at, and he went on to tell us that for a mere fifty-six thousand dollars, he would let us have a ninety-day construction easement. We decided that that probably wasn't a good deal, seeing how we just got the land next to him, the easement next to him for free, because they wanted to help the kids out. He did call me back today and say, no, fifty-six thousand wasn't what I meant to say, it was, it's something else, so I'll send that to you in writing. Actually, wanted to sit down and visit, I said, well, why don't you send it to me in writing, since I was not hearing you correctly, so if it comes down to it, I think Brad will agree, we still have an easement. We will not be allowed to get off of the easement for any reason onto his property, so we'll have to survey that pretty tight, and then we'll have to trench it to get our sewer line within the current easement. But either way, he's not gonna be happy, and the reason I bring this up is, I, I think And the reason I bring this up is, I think, eventually, we're going to have to settle up with him on the first easement. And I don't know how we arrive at that number. I think it's probably closer to ten thousand than it is eighteen thousand, but I'll probably get with Brad and see what kind of agreement we can reach with him, and get that settled before it gets any further. But you're probably gonna hear from him, he's a very vocal guy, his name is David Barrett. You're probably gonna hear, or get some phone calls from him, wanting compensation for us to put a sewer line across an easement that we already have. Unless you guys instruct me to do otherwise, my intention is not to give him compensation for anything outside of the land that we've already got an easement on. So, still with the high school project, we did get a chance to meet with the architect. I think they had a civil engineer, and the superintendent of our new high school, and the principal. Had a great meeting, they talked a lot about dirt work. Mike, I just wanted to pat you on the back here, his knowledge, and the things that he brings to the table, you can't buy that. I'll give him credit, I think Mike, pretty much, single-handedly, along with the new, the construction guys that they've got working, the owner's rep out there, probably saved the public school about a half million dollars in dirt work, just by knowing what they were talking about. So, we're excited to be able to help with them in any way that school is gonna really set things in motion for us. Along those lines, I can report to you tonight that the three hundred acres across the street from the new high school has, the land transaction has been completed. The new buyer that is going to put in the apartment units, the single-family, and a little bit of commercial, did buy the property today. So, that's fantastic news. We've got a lot of things happening. That opens the door to the new baseball complex, that they've already made substantial inroads to raising the money for the new baseball complex that will be out there across from the new high school. So, lots of good stuff. Oh, speaking of good stuff, Casey's called today, and visited with Sharon, and they said, hey, what do we need to be doing? We're gonna be there next week to start construction. So, hopefully, next week, you'll see the mobilization, and the construction begin on the new Casey store. Bryant Baker, he's, he gets a pass tonight, he's out meeting with Intermedics, which is the company that we use to help us bill for the ambulance services. Baker, man, you guys already know what a fantastic staff we've got, but just across the board. I mean, I don't know how Bryant fights a, fights a world-class grass fires all month, and then has the energy to go figure out our ambulance billing service, so kudos to him. The planning for the swimming pool is underway, for us to be able to bring back to you, from a cross-section of your community, a plan that we might be able to build a new swimming pool. Had our first meeting, I think it was, when, last night, or, I lose track. We met last night, and I think they're really excited. I don't know that we're gonna be able to afford what they want, and that's our job, is to tone it down a little bit, but I think everybody concerned is very, very excited about a new swimming pool. That's all I've got.
I'd like to go ahead and add a report here. I just want to absolutely take it a second time to thank you, Jeff, for being a part of the city council, and being here and helping us. Sometimes it wasn't so glorious, and sometimes the meetings lasted a while, but thank you for your time and service. City attorney?
Just have one thing. I'll be asking for you guys to set a special meeting here, probably before the city council meeting, to consider an ordinance for our annexation of our property, where the new high school is going to be built. I have already received, of the four tracts of land, I've already received all of the consents and the petitions, the signatures from the property owners, that will be petitioning you jointly to incorporate that territory into the city limits, and that will give us the ability, obviously, to do much more assistance, and, you know, get water and services, utilities, all of that stuff out there, it'll have to be done, and that will be coming pretty soon, and we'll be publishing a notice in the paper, so that the public can, we'll have to have a public hearing, and then you'll be able to vote and consider a proposed ordinance that I'll push out to you guys, for you to consider, so.
For clarification, this is all friendly. There is no, we're not taking or annexing anyone that is not petitioning to be annexed.
Right. The two ways we do this, obviously, we can ask that that be done, or the petition from the property owners, that's another way for it to be done, and in this case, all four of those property owners, basically, are petitioning to be incorporated, their property be incorporated, so, which is a good thing. I think that was all by design, they want, they want to do it, and it's a great thing, and that's the way we want it to happen, actually, so it's gonna be great.
Word one, Bill Watlin.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to express thanks, along with everyone else, to Jeff for his years of faithful, good, and hard-working service to the City of Seminole. It's been an honor to work with you, sir. One other thing, too. Seminole Nation of Oklahoma is divided into fourteen bands. There's a principal chief of the nation, and assistant chief, and then each band has its own chief, and we are very honored to have one of the band chiefs on our council. Stephanie Lambert is band chief for the Mecasuki Band, which is the second-largest band of the Seminole Nation. I'm Tuskegee Harjo, that's the largest. But I wanted to recognize Stephanie and Aaron.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you very much. And I just, once again, want to emphasize, women and girls, it's our best investment for the future. Anything that we can do as a community to enhance that they live in healthy, happy homes is gonna bring us closer to a healthy, happy future. Thank you.
Word two, Stephanie Lambert.
Well, I want to just thank the Humane Society for coming tonight, and all the work that you guys do in the community. My daughter loves to help you guys out, and so she's ready for the next food drive, whenever you guys are ready for her. I'll send her out to Walmart, or wherever you guys decide to have that.
Next week sounds really good. We'll send her out for next week.
Okay, I'll let her know. But, yeah, and so, but I really want to thank you guys, because there hasn't, I mean, there's times when we've come across the worst situations, and you guys have, no matter what time of day it is, they've always been responsive, and come to the rescue of whoever, you know, whoever we call, we send, and if we don't get an answer, well, I'm sorry, Marta, we send them your number.
I get a lot of calls.
And so, yeah, so we, but, but, yeah, but you guys have always been really responsive to help us out, or to help out, and so I get a lot of the random calls. I don't know, do you get a lot of calls? No? I get a lot of calls that say, we found a cat, and we don't know what to do with it, it's, doesn't have fur, or something like that, you know, and it looks like it's been pulled off by a dog, and we're like, well, call the Humane Society, you know, and usually almost, I mean, every time, they've called back and said, thank you so much, because we got the cat taken care of, and, but, thank you guys so much, and, you know, just a little applaud for you guys, because I really appreciate that, because, and then the rest of you guys, I mean, thank you guys, City of Seminole, thank you, Jay, for answering my calls, and even whenever it doesn't concern you, I still call. Is Jay there? I'm pretty sure Ladonna could have answered my question, but Jay's always, you know, quick to answer, but thank you guys so much.
John Kramer?
Jeff, I just thank you for your service. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Tim Poplin?
Yep, have to do the same, Jeff. What I'm gonna miss most about you is, we both serve the same ward, and he drives by my house all the time, and I'm gonna miss, because you're the only guy that drives by my house, doing the speed limit. Anyway, I wish you the best, and come by and see me. Come by and visit the neighborhood. Thank you.
Word four, Dee Patterson.
Well, I hate to see Jeff go. He's been with us twelve years. Thank you, Jeff. Good work. And I guess I won't say bypass, because it's bypass me. They shot me down quick. That's all I can do.
If I could get a motion under executive session, considering possible action to enter into executive session, under the Oklahoma Statute twenty-five, Article three oh seven, dot B, dot two, discussing negotiations concerning employees and representatives of employee groups, Lodge Number one thirty-eight, Seminole Fraternal Order of Police Contract Negotiations for the fiscal year twenty seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. I have a motion from Dee Dee. Do I have a second?
Second.